February 21st, 2019, a meeting of the Board of Commissioners to order this evening. Thank for all of our guests who are here with us tonight in the chambers, for those who are watching on TV, and for those who are watching by live streaming. So we welcome you to our meeting and to be able to see government working. This evening, we have our invocation by Pastor Michael Cummings, and after we have the invocation, if we will all stand and have our pledge.
Thank you, ma'am. Let us pray. Father, we invoke your presence upon this, your meeting, and this, your people that are seated in this place tonight. We pray that everything that will be thought, spoken, decided within these walls be done to the glory of your name. We thank you for all of those that are here, and let the information that goes forth, God, goes forth with clarity and with peace, and be over all of our governmental officials, and we pray for this now in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Peterson, I believe there is an item to add to the agenda.
Yes, ma'am. On your seats this evening is a, an agreement, a contract with Tennessee Department of Transportation. This contract is required to be executed in order for the state to begin right-of-way acquisition for the new signals to go in at the intersection of Harris Drive and State of Franklin Road. And Dr. Calhoun had asked me if I could make sure we could expedite this as much as we could. We just got this in today. We've reviewed it, and it's good to go.
Very good.
Thank you.
We know where that is. Where would you propose we insert this?
Right before the consent agenda. How's that?
Do I have a motion to add this item to the agenda?
So moved.
A second.
All right. Any further questions or comments? Ms. Jennings?
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wise?
Yes.
Mayor Brock?
Yes.
Next order of business is consideration of the minutes of your meeting held February the 7th.
Commissioners, any additions or deletions from the minutes?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further comments? Ms. Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wise?
Yes.
Mayor Brock?
Yes.
Your next order of business is the presentation of a proclamation to Ms. Deborah Van Brocklin on behalf, behalf of our dear friend Ralph, and is provided by Senator Rusty Crowe and the Tennessee Senate.
I think you can see, excuse me, let me get my microphone here. I think you can see from our response and reaction how much we still miss our colleague, Ralph Van Brocklin. His seat is where Dr. Calhoun is, and I often look down the dais and think I'm going to see him there. I'm real privileged tonight to be able to read this proclamation from the Tennessee General Assembly, who recognized Ralph's work and his commitment to his community. And so I will read it, and Vice Mayor Wise has the nice-framed version of the proclamation. And so we want to read this to you, Deborah. Whereas the members of this legislative body were greatly saddened to learn of the passing of Ralph Van Brocklin of Johnson City, and whereas Ralph Van Brocklin was an exemplary public servant and consummate professional who worked assiduously to improve the quality of life for his fellow citizens in numerous capacities, and whereas a highly respected civic leader and member of his community, Mr. Van Brocklin was a former mayor of Johnson City and current member of the Johnson City Commission. He donated all of his salary back to the city. And whereas Ralph Van Brocklin was elected to the Johnson City Commission in 2011, having previously served one term on the Johnson City Board of Education, he served as mayor of Johnson City from 2013 to 2015, and won reelection to a second term on the Johnson City Commission in 2016. And whereas, as a public servant, Mr. Van Brocklin governed with a sense of purpose, acumen, and a clarity, winning the respect and admiration of his colleagues for his attention to detail and his tenacity on issues, and I will agree with that, and projects that would move Johnson City forward. And whereas, Mr. Van Brocklin played an integral role on countless community projects to benefit the citizens of Johnson City, including the establishment of a new animal shelter, the purchase of property to expand Wing Deer Park, and the funding for construction of a new cafeteria and gymnasium at Liberty Bell Middle School. And whereas, during his tenure as a member of the Johnson City Board of Education, he supported adequate funding, top-notch facilities, better teacher salaries, and higher student achievement. And whereas, a native of California and graduate of the University of California, Los Angeles, Ralph Van Brocklin was an oral surgeon who attended dental school at the University of Pennsylvania and completed residencies at the University of California, San Francisco, and the University of Tennessee in Memphis. And whereas Ralph Van Brocklin leaves behind an indelible legacy of integrity and probity in public life, compassion and loyalty in private life, and diligence and dedication in all his chosen endeavors. And whereas, it is fitting that we should remember the bountiful life of this exceptional public servant and human being. Now therefore, I, Jenny Brock, Mayor of Johnson City, on behalf of Randy McNally, the Speaker of the Senate of the 110th General Assembly of the State of Tennessee, at the request of and in conjunction with Senator Rusty Crowe, do hereby proclaim that we honor the memory of Ralph Van Brocklin, reflecting fondly upon his impeccable character and his stalwart commitment to living the examined life with courage and conviction. And this is proclaimed in Nashville, Tennessee, on the 26th day of September, 2018. And it's signed by Speaker McNally and Rusty Crowe, Senator. Deborah, I know you probably don't want to say anything, because you don't, but I want to give you the opportunity, just in case you would like to.
I do want to just say how proud Ralph would be of this. He was so dedicated to this city and this community, loved working with Pete and all of you commissioners, and on Board of Education as well. And it's just such an honor. He would be so proud. And to all those who are responsible for this in the General Assembly, I appreciate it so much, and I thank you.
Well, we have one more thing. And that is the presentation of his placards that you may want to put with some of his other memorabilia. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Deborah, and thank you, Mark, his son, for coming tonight.
Your next order of business, Mayor, is a proclamation recognizing the Science Hill High School Future Business Leaders of America. If we could ask those folks to come forward, please.
Hello. How are you?
Good to see you.
Good to see you. Thank you for coming. Thank you, girls. And how are you? Good to see you. Thank you. Well, it's always nice to see students coming in from Science Hill, and particularly ones that you've worked with in golf. We have Lillian down on the end. It's good to see you tonight. So I'm really excited to present this proclamation. Whereas the Future Business Leaders of America was founded by Professor Hampton L. Forkney in 1937 to establish a national organization to unite thousands of high school and college business clubs. And whereas, the National Council for Business Education was established in 1940 to sponsor the students' organizations and select the name Future Business Leaders of America. And whereas, an experimental chapter was chartered at Science Hill High School on February 3rd, 1942, and by the end of the year, approximately 39 chapters were added across the nation. And whereas, currently, there are four divisions serving middle school, high school, college, and professional members, and approximately 197,000 high school members. And whereas, the organization's goals, among many, is to encourage members to develop individual projects that contribute to the improvement of home, business, and community. And whereas, Science Hill High School has record membership of 60, and 26 students participating in regional and state competitions. And whereas, Executive Council members Christine Leon, Kate Sutherland, and Lillian Quinn, with support of faculty advisors Marcia Shalyer and Mike Crumley, raised over $1,000 for the March of Dimes in December 2018. Now therefore, I, Jenny Brock, Mayor of the City of Johnson City, do hereby recognize Science Hill High School Future Business Leaders of America's contribution to our community. So let's give them a big, big round of applause. And why don't you tell us just a little bit about your club and some of the students who were participating?
Well, Lillian and Kate are just two of our officers. All of the students take leadership positions and participate in competitive events at the regional, state, and national level. And there were some years that the state, that the club was inactive at Science Hill, but we discovered that Science Hill was chapter number one, so we reactivated that, and the club has grown every year since then.
Well, my motto is, if you've watched Talladega Nights, Ricky Bobby's daddy said, "If you're not first, you're last." So Science Hill is number one, and that's how we try to get these young, talented students to join our organization, because we are number one.
I would like to thank everyone tonight, and I would also like to bring a bigger impact next year to the community, and thank you.
I just sort of want to express what an insanely wonderful honor this is to be recognized by the city like this. We've had such a successful year. We raised $1,000 for March of Dimes. We've had a record number of members this year, and to sort of end it like this is truly wonderful.
Well, thank you so much, and it's so great to see our young people who are really integrating into the community and learning from, from other business people and learning about leadership. So we want to thank you. And I will have to say one other thing about Ms. Lillian over here. She's one of our junior coaches in the first T program, and she is just awesome with our young golfers. So I want to thank you, Lillian. It's great to see you with a skirt on. Thank y'all very much. Here are the...
Thank you.
Thank you.
It is Tech Day Project. Okay, you all are making the presentation. Okay, I'm sorry. I thought there was a proclamation with this.
Are they?
They are. If we could recognize the Science Hill High School students that have worked on their Tech Day Project as part of the sesquicentennial celebration, and... Okay, Carlton's in charge. I can tell.
There we go. I can come up now. You had me scared there.
I bet they did all the work there.
They did all the work.
So thanks for letting us come over tonight. Johnson City Schools, as you know, has celebrated Digital Learning Day over the last four years, and we're very excited. Next Thursday, we'll celebrate that day again with a little twist on it this year, and our schools will be celebrating our use of technology and also celebrating our city's 150th anniversary. And we'll be sharing some of the projects that we're going to show you tonight with all of the schools in Johnson City. And this is something that Dr. Bentley and Dr. Anderson, who are on the Education Committee of the JC 150 program, came to us with, and it really grew and became a digital tour, if you will, of Johnson City's history. And we're going to leave each of you hot off the press tonight with one of our five different posters that are interactive with some QR codes and with some augmented reality that will really make these posters come to life, and each of you will be taking one of those home with you tonight. But Dr. Carlton Lyon, I really want to brag on him. He's our instructional technology coach in the district, and he's the one who really has spearheaded this with our Topper Tech team at Science Hill High School, a group of students that he started this year who really have gone above and beyond with a lot of the work that they're doing at the high school. And I'll turn it over to him to share some of the technology behind the posters and then some of the history behind the posters.
I wish they were here, because they make me look good, and they do all the work. But I think I keep pulling them to evening meetings, and they finally said, I think they made their work schedules so that they couldn't make it. So, but I don't think there's anything less techie than a poster. But in a second, I'm going to show you what, what they've done with some of these, and because these are going to be up, like we said, all the, all the schools in Johnson City, they have taken pictures from archives that they found and overlaid them with videos that will come up when they use their cell phones. So I know the sign up here says not to use our cell phones, but I'm going to break that rule here for a second. And so you all will be able to see what happens when they use their phone. If Dr. James, if you can hold this up. And so we have an app called HP Reveal that is a free app. Anybody can put on their cell phones. And when we go to a place on the poster...
Happy Birthday, Johnson City!
How fast did that happen?
So anyone that has that app, anyone that has that app, that video will pop up. That's really unfortunate for them. Well, we do, we do have more instructional pieces, for example...
All the instructions are on the poster. You don't have to worry about writing it down.
And so this is a great video about Langston High School with some great interviews with our students. And... A flyover of the high school. And so, and so that is, that is what our students will get to experience, not just looking at a poster, but doing this. And these are some of the things that this team does with all the daily basis.
So Mayor, 500 of these will go out to our schools next week for students to use, and we will be sharing the digital files with the city if you all would like to recreate these. And this is something that we can use all year long. So this one is about the educational history of Johnson City. We have one about the history and impact of the railroad on Johnson City and its background.
Be sure to move over by the microphone so people from home can hear you.
And this one is a very, very interesting history of Little Chicago in Johnson City, which gives some background and some information behind where that name came from. This one has a variety on it, mostly focused on the Johnson City sessions and some actual music played by the, the men who recorded in the 1920s, as well as a very rare clip of Elvis performing on Freedom Hall stage, if you hover over that. And a ticket for the upper level was $10 at that concert that night. And then our last one here, again, just expands on the musical heritage of Johnson City. So we're proud to share these on behalf of Johnson City Schools with the entire city and all of the schools, including our private schools and university school, that will be able to use these next Thursday during National Digital Learning Day.
Are there particular classes that did these, or just students?
A lot of our library media specialists actually did some of the research, and then Topper Tech team did most of the work.
So I'm sure you're aware that we handed out over 3,000 Chromebooks to 7th through 12th grade. Before that happened, I knew that I was going to need more than just the two of us to manage a lot of the, a lot of training and everything that was taking place. And so we implemented what's called the Topper Tech Team, and it's a geek squad of sorts, a group of 12 students who are getting leadership credit to work during the day. They go out to classrooms. They work with students and teachers on repairs, hardware, software, keeping things going, helping teachers with best practices in technology, helping students. Every day, we have a student that has to learn how to reboot their device. So they all know how to do this, but they don't all know how to do this. And so that's what, that's one of those soft skills that we're working on.
Can we come to class?
Come on, any day.
Well, I'd also like to recognize, I see Mr. Todd Barnett, Principal at Science Hill, is here tonight. Welcome. And Dr. Deborah Bentley sitting over here with Community Relations. So thank y'all for coming. Do you have any students with you tonight here?
No, like I said, like I said, they, I invited them, and I kept getting messages, "Dr. Lyon, I've got to work tonight, and I'm packing for a trip this weekend," and so they moved on.
Well, we are so hopeful that the opportunity of the schools is to teach about the history of Johnson City. You know, 150 years ago, we began, and we are where we are right now. And it's, it's fascinating for us to really study our history and understand how we've developed the culture that we have today. Now, for the students going forward, we're at a pivotal place, because we are setting the stage for the next 150 years. And so as we get prepared to bury the next time capsule in December of this year of 2019, we need to have those youth voices, you know, heard. And I'm sure, it'll be very different from the one we just dug up, because there's nothing audio in that whole thing or video. So we have an opportunity to really capture who we are today. And so 50 years from now and 100 years from now, when, when it's dug up, that they'll know who we were. We want to have that voice. So thank y'all so much for doing this, and thank you.
When do we play basketball again?
Friday and Saturday. Girls, Friday, boys, Saturday.
At Daniel Bay?
At our place.
At your place? Okay. So both Science Hill teams are home this weekend, Friday and Saturday at 7 o'clock to play in the regional tournament. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Go buy tickets, support your local home team.
Mr. Peterson, before we get to the next item, I do want to recognize also, we have Dr. Calhoun, another ETSU class here. This is from the Department of Public Health. Dr. Mike Stooks has brought his students tonight. I asked them what they wanted to learn from us, and I guess just how we, in a healthy way, govern. So keep that in mind as we make our decisions tonight.
They prepared to stay till midnight?
Are you? No.
No.
So we thank you. You're the second class. We had a journalism class here a couple meetings ago. So thank y'all for coming, and hope, hope you learned something from us tonight. Okay, now, sir.
Your next order of business is consideration of a certificate of compliance for retail package store for Phil Scharfstein, doing business as One Stop Discount Wine and Liquors, located at 1735 West State of Franklin Road. Again, this is a certificate of compliance. The State of Tennessee controls the issuance of the permit. We have made our reviews, finding no disqualifying factors, and would recommend your approval of the request for the certificate of compliance.
Move approval. Second.
A motion, a second, any further discussion? Ms. Jennings?
Commissioner Calhoun?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wise?
Yes.
Mayor Brock?
Yes.
Your next order of business is consideration of one appointment to the Golf Advisory Board. Dr. Jerry Cole's term is expired, and he has not expressed interest in being reappointed in your packet. You do have applications of interest from several different individuals that all qualify to be appointed.
Commissioners, I don't know if you've been able to talk with any of these applicants. I do have one I would like to put forward, if you are okay with that.
Sure.
Okay. I would like to nominate Dave Anji for service on the golf committee. He is not only a journalist, but a golfer, and he is very involved in, in youth golf as well with his, with his daughter. So I've known him, and he's, he's very dedicated around the golf course.
I will second that.
Sounds good.
Okay, a motion and a second. Any other comments? All right. Ms. Jennings?
Commissioner Calhoun?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wise?
Yes.
Mayor Brock?
Yes.
Next order of business is consideration of the consent agenda.
Commissioners, are there any items you would like to pull for further discussion? Commissioner Calhoun?
No.
Vice Mayor Wise?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Hunter?
No, ma'am.
And Commissioner Fowler?
None.
And I don't either. So, okay.
We asked our questions.
We did, okay. Is there a motion to pass the consent agenda?
Move for approval.
So motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Last chance. Ms. Jennings?
Commissioner Calhoun?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wise?
Yes.
Mayor Brock?
Yes.
Your next order of business is consideration of ordinance number 4684-19.
I thought we were going to do the...
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot about the T-DOT contract. The item you added to the agenda is a contract with Tennessee Department of Transportation, which will allow them to proceed with right-of-way acquisition and continuation of the construction of a signalized intersection at the intersection of Harris Drive West and State of Franklin Road. This will be in front of the, will actually be directly in front of Ruby Tuesday and adjacent to the Fine and Performing Arts Center. This is part of the project that we agreed to when the Fine and Performing Arts Center began construction.
What is the timeline on this?
There is not a timeline associated with this contract. If they're writing...
Just on the project, I'm sorry.
Best guess, I'd say it'll take them nine to 12 months to get this done, by the time it's operational.
Commissioners, any further questions for Mr. Peterson? Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Jennings?
Commissioner Calhoun?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wise?
Yes.
Mayor Brock?
Yes.
Now, we will go to ordinance number 4684-19. An ordinance to mid the zoning map, the City of Johnson City, Tennessee, being part of the appendix to ordinance number 1519, entitled an ordinance to adopt a code of laws and ordinances for the City of Johnson City, Tennessee, and to repeal all laws and ordinances in conflict therewith and amends itory thereof by changing from B3 Supporting Business District to I1 Light Industrial District, certain property located at 122 East Millard Street, ready for your consideration on first reading. Preston, if you would explain the issue, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Commission. Start here with this first slide. Identify the property on the map here. You'll see this is the property identified or outlined in blue. It is located just west of I-26. You can see 26 over here on the right-hand side of the screen. It is bound by three different streets, Elm on this side, King on the south side, and Millard on the north. You will see here that the property line appears to be slicing through the building. It is doing that. It, this, this building shares the same roof line, but there are two different buildings in here. There is a firewall behind, and I'll show you that just from the ground level. Here on King Street, you'll see, this is roughly where the building breaks on the King Street side, and then this is roughly where the building breaks on the Millard Street side, right here at Melbourne Street. But it is, does share the same roof line, but they are two different parcels. Moving on, looking at the zoning, the zoning on the property on this, on this eastern side is zoned B3. The property on the western side is zoned B2. That's downtown zoning. The property in question is only this that's outlined in blue. It is, does not include the Quantum Leap property. So the request, again, is to rezone from B3, which is Support Business or Support Downtown, to the Light Industrial. You'll see that pretty much everything in this area is zoned either B3 or B2. That's this red color. And then as you rate, head towards the interstate and beyond the interstate, in this light blue or purple color, is Heavy Industrial. If rezoned, this property would be contiguous with industrial zoning. You can just see here, it would create somewhat of a peninsula effect into the area. So let's, let's walk around the building before we get any further. I want to show you, this is the front of the building. This is from Millard Street, here at the corner of Millard and Elm. And as we're going around the building, you'll be able to see... And as we're going around the building, you'll be able to see where we're looking by referencing the yellow arrow. This, again, is where the primary loading area is. This is the main entrance into the building. You'll see there is surface parking lot here and two rows of mini warehousing. As we turn around, just to give you an idea of its proximity to 26, you'll see here is a shot looking north on 26, and then here is one looking south as you would be heading in towards downtown or towards Buffalo Mountain. This is a shot on King Street, looking westward towards downtown. You can see over here on the left-hand side of the screen, the John C. Sevier Building. So this is in the downtown area. And then as we turn around and facing back towards the interstate, this is Millard Street. This is on the left-hand side, the church over here. And on the right, you'll see the Quantum Leap. That's the sign right there and the 65,000-square-foot building beyond. This property and that gentleman on the screen there is the owner of the property. It's owned by a gentleman named Bill Bradley. He is the petitioner on this rezoning. He bought the building in 2007. It was originally housed for Giant Foods, for their warehousing and distribution. He bought it in 2007, and in 2013, he updated it. Pretty significant updates on the interior of this building for bedinabox.com. And that operated for roughly five years, just actually relocated about three months ago. The internal modifications to the building included flooring, other interior improvements. He installed a fire suppression system, upgraded power and lighting, et cetera. Most recently, as I noted, they have relocated to Mount Airy. And so right now, we have a vacant upgraded facility that is ready and available for light industrial. That's why we have this request before you today. Northeast Tennessee Regional Economic Partnership, or NETREP, is involved with this. They are assisting the property owner in shopping a potential new user or employer for this property. That has yet to be announced. However, it's important, and I have pointed this out to the Planning Commission and I pointed it out to you previously, that regardless of any work that's being considered by NETREP, you must consider all the entitlements involved with the industrial zoning, as opposed to just one particular user. And that information was provided to you in your backup report. So again, the request is to change from B3 to I1. The one difficulty with this rezoning is the future land use map. And you have this here on the screen. What is outlined in blue is the downtown business district. And what's important about the downtown business district is this is the land use category, future land use category, that encourages additional mixed use and other downtown-type land uses and development patterns that are consistent with what you see along Main and Market. So that's encouraging more of that in this area. However, staff did recommend approval based on the fact that the site's already developed. And at their regular meeting on February 12th, the Planning Commission did recommend to approve in a split vote, 7-2. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Commissioners, it is your pleasure.
Could make a comment if I could, just to start. I was on the Planning Commission for that meeting, and there was considerable discussion, some debate about whether this is an appropriate request. And I think it really came down to where that particular building is located, what it was used for, how it's been upgraded, the opportunity for a number of jobs. I wish we knew more information, but there's some non-competes or confidentiality agreements that are involved, which was outlined in the newspaper. But the bottom line, it felt like the right thing to do. This is not a temporary zoning. It's rezoned, and it could be rezoned back to where it is now if necessary. And because of that, I think the Planning Commission, with a vote of 7 to 2, was in support of this rezoning, as I was.
Thank you, Commissioner Calhoun.
I will move for approval.
All right, you have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion on this property? Okay. You ready to vote? Ms. Jennings?
Commissioner Calhoun?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wise?
Yes.
Mayor Brock?
Yes. Thank you, Preston.
Your next order of business is consideration of ordinance number 4682-19. An ordinance to amend the zoning map of the city of Johnson City, Tennessee, being part of the appendix to ordinance number 1519, entitled an ordinance to adopt a code of laws and ordinances for the city of Johnson City, Tennessee, and to repeal all laws and ordinances in conflict therewith and aminitory thereof by changing from B4 Arterial Business District to RP3 Planned Residential District, a portion of certain property located at 4835 North Roan Street, ready for your consideration on second reading after public hearing.
Okay.
Mayor, Commissioners, before you, as you request to rezone a portion of the property located at 4835 North Roan Street, from B4 Planned Arterial Business to RP3 Planned Residential. The parcel is located at the intersection of North Roan Street and Hammett Road. The property is a .42-acre portion of a 4.08-acre lot. It's currently vacant. The applicant's requesting the RP3 zoning to construct three single-family homes. The properties that abut this section of North Roan Street are predominantly commercial. There is a multifamily development just north of Hammett Road, and the residential, or the properties behind the commercial development are predominantly residential. The future land use plan calls for commercial development abutting North Roan Street with residential development behind this commercial development. Therefore, this rezoning request is consistent with the future land use plan. The concept plan, which is Phase 3 of the cottages at Cedar Rock, calls for the construction of three single-family homes here to be accessed by Brinkley's Way, which will be built during Phase 2. The concept plan meets all lot size and unit density requirements. And it's January 8, 2019, meeting the Johnson City Regional Planning Commission, recommended approval of the rezoning from B4 to RP3 and approval of the concept plan.
Okay, very good. This is a public hearing. Is that correct? Okay. I'll open the public hearing. Are there any citizens here who would like to speak for or against this zoning, rezoning? Last chance.
One at a time.
Line up and sing, go on, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Move for approval.
Second.
Our motion is second. Any further discussion?
Just curious why this was added at a later date, why it wasn't included in the original, or they just figure out that they had additional space to...
They, the property, the developer bought that, is buying that piece of property from another owner. The original request, when they, for this Phase 3, they wanted to rezon the entire parcel, which really didn't make sense to change the B4 zoning for the reasons stated during the presentation. So it's sort of, it's been an afterthought from the original two phases.
And it's down zoning, so that's always a good thing.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. We call the roll?
In a second.
Okay. Ms. Jennings?
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wise?
Yes.
Mayor Brock?
Yes.
All right, at this time, I've got to ask a couple of staff people to come up and make some presentations to you under the, as part of the City Manager's Report. I'd like to start off with Laura Young, talking about the results of our recent citizen survey. And Laura, if you would, please.
Back in January, I kind of gave you a heads-up and sent the citizen survey reports. And now that we've got our new website up and running, this will be uploaded. The prior one in 2016 is on there now. We'll put 2018 on tomorrow, the first of next week. So our citizens will be able to go in and look at the information. And this is just a real broad brush. I wanted to hit some high points and kind of call some things to your attention. Some of the technical parts as far as how the survey is conducted, as well as some particular There were 2,000 surveys mailed out. We have about, just under 32,000 residential addresses. We contract with the National Research Center out of Colorado. They are our third-party administrator, and they do not get a governmental file from us on property tax, I mean, the addresses from our property tax base. They simply go to the post office and reach in and get them, and then they randomly are distributed by zip code. The baseline for the survey is 1,500, and after the first survey we did in 2012, this is the fourth one, and we do one every two years, we recognized that we needed to tap into just a little bit more of our sample population. And so we've raised the bar to the 2,000, and that's what we've done for the last three. Our response rate, this year, we had 481 responses. These are mailed. About 74 of those were actually completed online. Most of them were completed by mail. The typical range, the normal range on these surveys nationwide is anywhere between 20 and 26 percent. We've consistently hit on the upper echelon of that scale.
Yeah, we also have online surveys returned, but we don't count them in the results.
That's correct. And I'll hit that at the very end, just to kind of give you, just a point or two about that. There are 440 cities in the benchmarking comparison, or the national average comparison. Eight of those are in the state of Tennessee, including Johnson City, Brentwood, Bristol, Chattanooga, Franklin, Germantown, Maristown, and Sevierville are the ones that are in this mix. The next comment about the number of communities varies with each question, just to touch on that just a minute. If you look in the technical appendices, you may not see exactly 440 comparisons in the number. For example, we have solid waste recycling. So if there is a question to rate our recycling service, there may only be 380 cities in that 440. And that's the reason for the last comment, where all these resorts, results from the National Research Center on the mailed one are very scientific. There's a huge calculation and particular way that they actually go in and weigh these Okay, the next slide, just real briefly. This has been consistent over all four surveys as well. Our community attributes, the survey is broken down, the questions are broken down, 130 different benchmarks are broken down into these categories. And all four years, the citizens that responded have said that the safety in our community and the economy of our community and our city are our two strongest facets, and they are the most important facets that we have in the services that we provide and just how we are as a community. The next three or four are pretty much just kind of the big-picture pieces, where these different benchmarking, the 130 are kind of pulled into a couple of categories. So you'll see the quality of life, the green is the excellent or good, where we got excellent or good responses on our quality of life measures. Johnson City is a place to live. Again, we're way up on the charts on those.
Laura, can I pause you for just a second?
Sure.
Dr. Stooks, this may be a very important survey for y'all, and you're sitting so far over, you may not be able to see it. Do y'all want to move over for a second? I'm noticing that most of your students are craning their neck.
Thank you, Mayor.
You bet.
Yeah, I mean, you're missing these multicolored pie charts.
But you're going to see a good survey here from our citizens.
If you would like to have a copy of this survey, you mail it to us.
We can get it to you.
We can do the slideshow and then the backup data with it as well.
Yes, we can. I'll just, I'll catch you just a little bit. Great, thank you. These are the quality of our city services. This is everything from police, fire, EMS, to solid waste, stormwater, any city service you can imagine are included in that particular one. And then our sense of community, again, we're typically on the upper echelon of these particular questions and how they're ranked. They always go back and give us some comparison between how our citizens responded in the prior survey, the immediate prior, and the current one. So again, we started in 2012 every two years. So from 2016 to 2018, of the 130, we had 118 of those, 130, that were very similar or our responses increased. That is more than we have had of that 130 all four years. The 12 that decreased, in case you have a question swirling in your mind about the ones that decreased, the majority of those questions were things that were asked that were not necessarily related to city services, such as, "Do you plan ahead for emergency supplies? Do you have energy-efficient appliances or measures in your home?" That was the bulk of the 12. There were about three or four that were city service-related, and one of them in particular was stormwater. So I had a conversation with our National Research Center representative in Colorado. That had trended upward from 2012 to 2016, and it kind of leveled, and there's not a significant drop, but it kind of dropped. And in talking with her about what we've done and where we are, that was the big push between those surveys for Founder's Park. And I think there's a little bit, there may be not as much of a push because it's not so new for King Commons. And in addition to that, the question that she had, because of the way we name those places and refer to them as parks, they're considered more of a park facility than a stormwater facility. And she said, "I can't read minds, but that's the general concept." When they get storm drainage and stormwater questions, a lot of times when we have those kind of facilities built, there's a little bit of a misconception or a confusion. But the majority of the decreases were just in those things that are not related to city services.
Handle stormwater and nobody notices you doing it? Then you've done it well.
And we did talk about our weather patterns before we did this survey. In the fall of last year, we had a very rainy summer and rainy fall, and it continues today. So any amount of flooding or flash flooding in and around there, you know, we've gotten staff comments about how Founder's Park, people that are there shortly after a rain event or during a rain event, and at the, you know, what we have going on downtown and some of those activities. There have been citizen comments about how well that park works and handles the water. But anytime you get flash flooding or something come around, people automatically think, "Oh, we're not taking care of our stormwater detention." Sometimes it doesn't matter what we do, it's just more than our geographic area can handle at one time. Okay. We, over the four years, we had some significant increases in our excellent and good ratings. And I'm not going to go through each of these, but I'll call your attention to a couple of them, where we've actually looked at the surveys over the four years, and the city commissions evaluating and looking at these surveys have taken action and put tax dollars toward improvements. And it's reflective on how our citizens respond to this. For example, the paths and walking trails. You know, in the middle of all this, we've had the Tweetsie Trail, we've had some more sidewalk availability, some loops connected, those kind of things people are noticing and they're paying attention to. That goes along with the next one, the ease of walking. The vibrant downtown commercial area, there's been a lot of money put down there, and it's, you can see the difference. They didn't ask, the NAs, they didn't ask that question in 2012. But to go from 32 to 57 in a very short period of time speaks very well of our staff and how they've done that, how it's been promoted, and the commission's ability to be able to allocate and manage the projects downtown. The cultural arts and musics, public places, built environment, all those, and looking at that, a lot of that is pretty much related, if you dig into the survey a little further, it does have a lot to do with our downtown, our parks, and the trails. A lot of that, where we've made a lot of investment, now we're kind of seeing that our citizens, on paper as well as at the events, are really taking advantage of a lot of that. And interestingly enough, the last one, we seem to be a little bit of an anomaly on that one. And so several years ago, when those numbers were creeping up on that one that voted in local elections, what we gleaned from that was that of the people that completed the survey, 82 percent of those voted in the last election, which means that the people that want to be heard are the ones that are going to take the time to let you hear their voice in another way. They're going to vote, they're going to be active in the community and those sort of things. So...
How did that compare to the national benchmarking?
Overall, the average, we're very similar across the board to that, but if you... But if you actually kind of pick apart some of the things, and she gave me a little bit of information, we do kind of stand out a little bit more on that. We're ahead of the curve in a lot of ways on that. And it's just, you know, how we conduct business that, and try to get our, you know, our citizens involved and educated on what we're doing and why we're doing the things that we are. A lot of that kind of comes into play. These are our moderate increases interpreted as this is where we shine. We have consistently done an excellent job from our staff for, like, the overall feeling of safety, the neighborhood, the recreation, all that is just staff-driven with the funding and things that we have done to improve. The downtown lighting, just changing the lighting downtown from what we had to the LED made a, had a huge impact on, when you dig into a couple of the surveys, had a huge impact on people just feeling safe being downtown.
I think that would carry over into neighborhoods too.
It does.
Because we have several neighborhoods we've done completely.
Yes, yes, it does.
It stayed flat up until this past year and then...
Yes. The next several that I'm going to flip through, I'm not going to go through all of them, but we have an opportunity to customize three questions. These have been relatively consistent for every single survey. And so the question is at the top, we've asked them how to rate on a priority scale, high priority, medium or not a priority. And then there's a don't know, we're not interested category. But so I captured the first three. And as you can see, our citizens are interested in the downtown parking and the improvements, continuing the improvements that we're making with the traffic flow, with stoplights and roundabouts and those sort of things. Does anybody have any questions on any of that? Excuse me. Okay. These go, this right here goes back to that, those facets, the aspect boxes that we have. We want to know the quality of life in Johnson City. So what we did when we customized that question, we don't know on the front end how those are going to rate. So we tried to capture and just see, without getting into the service areas, really what's important from the 100,000-foot level. So we did take some of the terminology from the community aspects and ask that question. Again, these have been consistently on the higher end every year and just about in the same order. And then we asked people to go back and look for the last two years. Because we do the survey every two years, how satisfied with you are the things that we have done so far? And so again, this is pretty much just to kind of, we have cherry picked a couple of things that have been, where we've made a lot of improvements. We added money to resurfacing a couple of years ago. So we kind of wanted to know where they landed on that. We've done a lot of transportation improvements, again, with downtown and recreational opportunities. The fiscal management and responsibility, that is a question that, that part of the question was highly recommended by the National Research Center. So that we have an opportunity to kind of glean a little bit of how people, our citizens feel about how we're taking care of their money.
Can you flip back to the slide right before that?
I can.
On healthy community, what would be the average citizen's interpretation of what that means?
Healthy community? A lot of it, what I gathered from the National Research Center, the intent behind that was to capture the recreational areas like the walking trails and fitness opportunities as much as anything.
The built environment that we have.
It is.
That you have access to.
Yes, there are some questions in the survey to rate, like our medical facilities and the accessibility to health care. And those are usually in the median range, right around the average. So when we were wording, when I was wording, we were going through wording these, we had them actually kind of fine-tuned and take examples from other cities. And so that healthy community idea kind of captures a little, a little bit of the medical availability and health care part, but a lot of it's the fitness opportunities that we have. And so in summary, I just wanted to tell you that, and these, the verbiage on the first three are taken straight from the survey. Seven in 10 that responded to our survey rated Johnson City as a great place to retire and they, their neighborhoods are safe and it's a very community-driven cohesive area for us to live in. Again, safety, I can't say that enough. We've spent a lot of time and effort and our staff has with your support to be able to upgrade some of the lighting and our neighborhood committees and those kind of things people are taking notice of. Every single survey across the board in every city, the service areas that rank the highest are our public safety. And I asked the question about that one and the majority of that is, that's usually when you're at, unfortunately, when you're at your worst or you've had a major event and you need their services. And so we have a tendency to pay a lot more attention to the quality of those services when you've got something like that going on. Again, more of our ratings overall were higher than they have been in the past as far as we had more positive information. Across the board, we were pretty much at the benchmark level on everything compared to the national average. So we're doing really well, we're not losing any ground on anything and we've continued to improve. And so we'll approach the citizen survey and consider to do that again in the next two years. Once we completed the survey, the mailed surveys opened for about a month, we start in September. We actually did have an online survey that we put out on social media and on our webpage. It was open for about three and a half or four weeks, just around Thanksgiving on up to about the first part of December, the middle of December. And consistently, again, every year, our web survey results pretty much do mirror our mailed survey results. There was hardly any differential at all in the ratings. And that particular survey is opened up to anybody. If you live, work, play, eat, dine and are educated in Johnson City, you can complete that survey. And so our communications and marketing department does a great job of pushing that out to schools and the chamber and other areas to try to get some response, so...
How many answered the online?
We had just under 300 that answered online. So we had about 750 overall that answered. And our online survey, a lot of it just kind of depends what you have going on, what's going on during the year, what time of year you do it, those kind of things. And so this year, that one went out about a week and a half later. So it, like I said, it got caught up in the Thanksgiving holiday weekend and then a week or so afterwards. And so they attributed, we had a little bit of a drop between the one in 2016 and now. And that's what she said, there's, capture a holiday weekend in there. And a lot of it just was the timing when we got things together and they were able to get our link live.
Do you get the average age of the people filling out, especially the written-in survey?
I do.
Demographically broken down about a few ways you could want to see it.
Excuse me. And not everybody will complete that part, it's not, it's just kind of a demographic. We have, usually I'll get a few phone calls about, "Why do you need to know this?" And we just tell them, you know, "You're not required to fill that out if you choose to do so, fine. If you don't, it's not that big of a deal." But the information that we did get back, 53% were female, 47% were male and 35% of the respondents were 55 years and older.
What was the age group that had the biggest response rate?
The 55 years and older, yes.
Well, but that's a lot of age group.
Did they break it down?
They break it down by 18 to 34, 35 to 54.
But we have, when we look at the 18, 18 to 34?
Yes.
Then we can see all those same results by that demographic and see...
Because I bet you the 18 to 34 aren't thinking about retiring quite as much.
Right, right.
This is a great place to live and work and start a business too. You don't have to just retire here.
Well, we need to look at those results for sure and we'll all get a, I think we, do we have it?
Yes, you've got a copy and we'll put it, yes. And we'll put it on the website tomorrow, the first of next week and we'll put an email copy out to you.
Laura, what's our biggest opportunity? What's our biggest challenge or did you take away from your study of the results? What are the citizens telling us that we need to pay some attention to?
I think the biggest things that we, we've got the safety covered. We've got the recreation trails and those kind of things covered. Everybody seems to be satisfied with that. Welcoming citizen involvement, I think, was one of the comments that we got back when talking with the National Research Center and just kind of looking at some of the little individual ones, was one, we have made strides in that over the last survey. And she was asking things about change and as we kind of got into the weeds on that one, the live streaming popped up and that seems to have made a bit of a difference.
I told you they'd like it.
Will you thank Ms. Kevos Meyer for that?
Yes, and they're a great resource. Well, you know, if I've got a question just very similar to yours, you know, where do we need to go? The overall aspects of the survey in general, our staff, we do a great job with the resources that we have. There's just, I think people are interested in, we're not doing a bad job with anything that we're doing. We're doing very well and everybody seems satisfied. So I think at this point, not so much a serious challenge in a negative way, but in a positive way is just to keep doing what we're doing. And, you know, hold our own, there's always areas and room for improvement. But we've got, this was the best one so far and the four that we've done.
Well, we'll use this information as we do our strategic planning here in the next few weeks, particularly, I think, as we kind of cut through those demographic groups. Because some of the messages may be a little different, I can imagine.
Right.
Laura, do, has the commission, being new, has the commission ever considered or looked at other populations, not just the citizens, but the business citizens that are users of our services? And, I mean, do we do any type of surveying in that realm?
They're included in the online survey and so when we do the push, they're able to do that. And they, that's why we send it out to the chamber, so they can send it out to their members. And then a lot of times, they will connect with somebody else that's a peer business for them. And so we do try to push that out into that area. We could do something internally, I'm sure our development services group or communications marketing, you know, we could get together and do something specific for them if you'd like to see that. But we try to capture that, that's why we do the web survey. And, and that's not, they don't weight that, it's not all the scientific stuff. But the responses are very similar and we do try to do that because, you know, our daytime population is 100,000 plus and that includes our business owners and that are in town as well as people that come and visit, so...
Thank you.
You're welcome. And we do, we have used this for budgeting in the past. That's the reason that we've got, made, been able to move some of the improvements. So it just doesn't sit on a shelf, it is used.
This is related only in that it's a survey. What, when would we be doing our employee survey again?
That's a great question. You will see a request in the upcoming budget to fund an employee survey that we would hope to do July, August, somewhere in that timeframe.
Which would be about two years off when the last one was.
Correct, yes. This, and one of the early surveys, if you will recall, we asked specifically if we were to do a tax increase, how would you want us to spend the money? Was basically one question and the other question was just the inverse of it. If monies weren't available to continue current service levels, what services could you tolerate being cut? And that drove, that's really what drove the last property tax increase. And, you know, the one thing that we got out of that survey was, don't cut the level of service on streets. And yes, I could support a property tax increase if you'll spend more money on resurfacing streets. And that's how we got to spending an additional $3 million annually on street resurfacing. And that's, that's one example of four or five things that we, we got feedback on. And this, this is very helpful in strategic planning and budgeting and those types of things. So it's been a very valuable tool over the eight years. And the employee survey was, the initial one was done about 18 months ago and we fully expect to have the same level of results from the employee survey that, that we have with this survey.
So one of the biggest, one of, a big challenge in our region completely is just the health of people who live in Upper East Tennessee. And we hear that from employers, we hear it from the healthcare community. So knowing that we have this class in here tonight, Dr. Stu, it would really be interesting to know as we look at our built environment in Johnson City and then you look at, you know, our, you know, the health status of our citizens here as well. That's the piece we don't know. Are we improving our health status here because we have more access to facilities and we are focused more on that and we have a lot more of events that we're promoting to get people active and engaged in taking responsibility for their own health? We don't know. You know, if, you know, we want to continue to investing in those trail systems and all the things that people seem to be pretty happy about, is there a payoff to our citizens? You know, that, that we can see that improvement? We know it's a factor in employability, you know, the business leaders are telling us that. So it's a big thing and I think as a city, we can at least provide the baseline level that it's safe, it's accessible, it's easy to get to. And when you just look at the physical amenities that we have here for exercise, I think it's, I think we're, we're pretty good. Thanks a lot.
But it's worth, it's worth, for the student's benefit too, from an economic recruitment or economic development standpoint, public health considerations of our population often work against us. Whether it's the abuse of opioids, whether it's the obesity and diabetes, those are things that if a big employer is thinking about locating a plant here, they look at those statistics and sometimes the numbers don't tell the right story.
Right. We need some answers, guys. How are we going to get people to turn around?
So that's all on you.
We've left you a mess.
Look at all these positive answers.
Thank you, Laura, that was great, thank you.
Janet, can I get you to walk us through key indicators and monthly financials, please, ma'am?
Yes, at your place, you should find a very thick document. We'll go through some of the financials and then I'll key on some financial statistics. The financial report covers six months of activity, so we're halfway through the year. We're actually, as of today, we're more than halfway through the year with these connections reflects six months of activity. You'll see on page six, our fund balance that you have designated to go for economic development. This is in the thick part of the document. So you can see at the end of December, we had $1.6 million set aside for economic development. I would anticipate that balance ending the year at 2.3 million. So that gives you some idea of the funds that you actually have set aside for economic development. And over the past few years, we've been using some of those funds to do some special capital projects. So in addition to the 2.3 that I anticipate extending in the year, you'll find on the next page your reserves for the hotel occupancy tax. This would be the additional 2% that we now collect. We collect a total of 7% of hotel occupancy tax. 5% of that goes into the general fund, the other 2% goes into the general fund that gets set aside. And that goes to pay for the down, the fund for the arts. So you can see at the end of December, we stand at $101,000. I would anticipate that we would end the year at about $330,000.
What's our total collection on hotel motel tax?
Page nine. We have a budget of about $2.1 billion. And you can see we've collected about 55% of that through six months of the year. So those collections have actually been quite healthy.
So we're up, up over budget. That's, that means people are coming into town then.
I'm looking at page nine, which is a good place to go next. You can see up near the top, we have the TVA pilot allocation, impact fee. Those are the monies we're receiving from the TVA for the negative impact caused by the boom, dam, reconstruction or repair work. So we'll continue to receive those monies for a period of time. And those are being set aside for economic development. We've just not reflected that in these financials yet, but we will move those monies over.
So that's a part of the increase you're talking about?
Yes. As part of the 2.3, I would anticipate that fund ending at, I think, the year. If you go on down near the bottom of the page, you'll see we have incorporated golf into the general fund. The revenue budget for golf is $460,000. into the general fund. The revenue budget for golf is $460,000. We've collected about half of that. So with warmer weather, hopefully, in early summer, I would pay. We certainly are attracted to beat that revenue projection.
Drier in warmer weather.
Yeah, drier.
A little wet over there.
Probably drier. All the other revenues are pretty much on track. I want to skip over property taxes and sales taxes. For the time being, because I have some more up-to-date numbers on those two figures, so we can save that for, in just-
You'll see.
On page 10, you can see the total intergovernmental revenue is at about 46% of budget. The reason we're not quite up to half of budget yet is because a lot of these revenues come in near the end of the year. You're going to have some other things like the Tennessee income tax, the whole income tax, that will come in actually closer to the end of the year. So I don't see any weakness really in this set of numbers. You can see that the, well, you'll see in a moment, actually, that the state of Tennessee's sales tax figures are quite healthy compared to last year, but you'll see that in just a moment. If you skip on over to page 12, I wanted to point out, near the bottom, we have made our very last week's payment with the billing authority. That transaction took place earlier in the year. We made our final operating expense transfer. So we are out of that business as far as us making payments under the agreements that were in place at the time. Anything you choose to do in the future will be something different than this. Again, you can see that we brought golf into the general fund, and we are at 47% on the expenditures. So keep in mind, we brought in half the revenues so far, but 47% of expenditures have gone out the door. So we're in fairly decent shape there. You can clearly see that a loss was budgeted, but... Okay, if we go on over to page 14. Again, near the bottom, well, let me point out taxes. You can see that over last year, we are $161,000 higher on our tax collections year-to-date. And as I said, I will cover property tax in more detail in just a moment.
Are the Christmas, Christmas sales taxes not in here yet?
I do have updated figures in the key statistics. That's-
Oh, okay. All right. Thanks.
So I'll give you those in a moment. You can see, again, you can see where golf has brought in, has been brought into the general fund. Zero last year because golf was in it again. Enterprise fund in the prior year. On page 15, here's what I wanted to point out. State of Tennessee sales tax. You can see we've brought in $136,000 more than last year. So that's, you know, that's very, very healthy. So I think that was my computer making that noise. Sorry. Page 16, total revenues. We're at $866,000. Pardon?
What is payphone commission on page 15?
That is in, that is in the jail. They, we actually get commissions from the payphones over in the jail.
Who still supports the payphone?
It went out, didn't it?
Well, they, they use them, yeah, the-
No, I mean the company.
The ladies in the jail actually use the payphones, so.
Wow, that's pretty healthy.
Do you all know what a payphone is? Have you all ever seen one? Okay, good day. Good day.
Phone booth.
A lot of people don't know what they are, even.
I know.
So we're up, we're up over half a million dollars on intergovernmental revenue there?
Correct. Correct. Part of that is in, is in the jail revenues. And that part of it could possibly be timing between last year and this year. We bill those, we have a contract with the state to house the female inmates, and we bill them. And the recording of that revenue is purely based on the timeliness of their payments to us. Total revenues were up $866,000 on page 16, so that's, that's really good news. I think overall, we're in good shape. If you go to page 18, our revenues have exceeded our expenditures through six months by about $11 million. But I have to remind you that a big part of that is the fact that we collect our property tax revenues, the majority of them within a three-month, two- to three-month period. And the majority of that collection period has now transpired. We will continue to collect over the rest of the year, but just not to that magnitude. You'll see those property tax revenues in just a moment. There is, you have the enterprise funds following the general fund. There's really not anything that's noteworthy to report, just that all of the funds are holding their own. They're pretty much hanging at or above last year as far as their net income. So I don't really have any concerns about any of the enterprise funds. Freedom Hall's activity is purely a, it's based on the mix of shows they have at Freedom Hall. So to say they're down from last year is really not indicative of anything other than the mix of shows they have.
Is the prior year when Elton John was here?
Um, you know, I don't recall. It could be-
It was.
When you have a large show like that with a large per-ticket price, you're going to see the revenues jump way up. That's why you really can't look at revenues, because it just depends on, you know, the caliber of show that you have. Because bottom line, really, a lot of what we're retaining at Freedom Hall is just the rental of the arena. We keep very little of the amount per ticket. We get concession sales and some things like that. So a lot of those monies that come in go to the promoter. But we do get the rental for the hall. Now, the ETSU basketball games prove to be, you know, profitable for us. That's a really good arrangement and use of that facility. Then you find schools. I did want to point you to page 46, the health insurance fund. I didn't want you to be alarmed. That fund, for the year, we, we have experienced a deficit of $720,000. However, the majority of that is with the school side of things. You know, we're going to have ebbs and flows in this fund, and this fund has been built up over a number of years. So you're going to see increases every year, and then you're going to see some dips occasionally. That's not really anything to be alarmed about. We still have $11.6 million in the reserve in the health insurance fund. I mean, that could carry us, it'd be six to seven months if we brought in nothing.
Do we know if some of this is just contributed from one or two big cases?
It likely is. I think we've had some pretty major claims this year.
And we have stop-loss insurance for, what, 250?
Three.
300 now? Okay. So we protect ourselves, I think, pretty good?
We do. We do. We have some good risk mitigation built in there.
And the clinic, the employee clinic is paid for out of this trust fund?
It is. And that continues to be, you know, quite a, quite a bonus for employees. I mean, we've had some, we've had quite a bit of flu hit. We've had flu hit at our department. The employees can go over to the clinic. They can get their medication, you know, get seen much quicker than they can if they go to a walk-in clinic. So, and they walk out with their medication. They don't have to go to the pharmacy. So that's wonderful.
I'm not sure that's something you want to say.
Okay, we won't say that. Sorry about that.
We're going to have to go to the pharmacy.
Well-
I was trying to figure out how to quietly tell you-
Nor do they have to pay for it.
It's transparency.
That's right. It's transparency.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming.
The last, the last few pages are the capital projects. I think the notable thing here would be to let you know that we will be closing on our bonds next Wednesday. So we will have our bond money for the Sesquicentennial, for the police training, for some water sewer projects, for a fire truck, for the purchase we made of land out near Wing Deer Park. Those things, we'll now have cash in the bank, and we can reimburse ourselves for what we spent. We also have $2 million for solid waste, for the purchase of Bolton Block property. And then we have some money for some work at the library, I believe. And then a little bit of money to put in with the Liberty Bell cafeteria, the shortage there. So we have some things covered. Some are in the event we need it, but you'll see that money came in. We got an excellent rate, below 3%. So 2.93. Now, I'm going from memory, so don't hold me exactly to it, but it seems like it was about 2.93 to 2.95. Excellent rate. We had a good number of bidders on our money, which means there's a lot of confidence out there in the bond market with Johnson City bonds. So lots of interest. In fact, our financial advisor told me that the particular firm that purchased our bonds, that put in the low bid, typically, they participate in a group of investors. And they pulled out and participated on their own this time. So that showed great confidence in us. It was fidelity. So that covers the financials kind of in a quick fashion. More importantly, I wanted to review our two major revenue sources for the general fund. So if you go to your key financial statistics, you can see that in fiscal year 2018, and at this time, we did not have the state-assessed properties billed. So you'll only see county-assessed. In the next report, you will see the state-assessed properties. Those are some, the trucking companies and those telecommunications and those sorts of things that the state assesses. But this would be all of the properties that Washington County assesses. Last year, we billed $34.6 million. This year, we billed right at $35 million, growth of $345,000. You can see that through six months last year, actually, three months, because we bill in October. So for the three-month collection period last year, we had collected 82.79%. We've improved that this year. We collected 83.44%. So we're encouraged by that. You know, typically, when the economy is a little bit better, people are a little better at paying their bills on time. And so I think that's a good indicator of the health financially of the community. So all of that looks great. And property taxes comprise 39% of our revenue budget, so it's huge. We are showing a little bit of weakness against where we budgeted to be. I'm not terribly concerned. I think we'll make that up in some other areas, but we'll continue to watch that. But, you know, what you don't bill, you can't collect. So the billings are about $42,000 below where we wanted them to be. So our delinquent tax collections are addressed on the next page. Our delinquent collections are $58,000 below last year. There's still plenty of time to watch this number, but you have to keep in mind, the better we get at collecting the current year, the fewer delinquent accounts we're going to have. So I'm not terribly concerned about that being lower. I think that we have a conservative budget in place. So we should be okay there. Interest and penalty is about even with last year. We'll continue to watch that. We've already had our tax sale for the year, and that came in some good results. We were pleased with those results. Moving on to sales tax. This is a bit of concerning area, one we continue to watch, because although we have, you know, we have good growth, it's not great growth. So you can see our year-to-date growth is 1.44%. The problem is, we were hoping to be around 2.5% to 2.6%. So obviously, we have some softness when you compare to budget. So we're running, we're tracking about $130,000 below budget. This does include Christmas sales. So you can see the month of December, we were down 1.63%, or $38,000.
What do we attribute being so far off in December, and yet, year-to-date, still being to the positive?
We had four fairly healthy, two very healthy months of growth, and two more fairly healthy months of growth. The very strong, strongest showing was in August and October. In August, we had a growth rate of almost 4%. And then in October, we had 5.6%. So we started the year down about a half of a percent. Then we ratchet up to, you know, almost 4% growth. And then we have one month that's kind of so-so. October's huge. And then we have another month that's so-so. And then December's down. So I looked at details, and I really cannot see anything in the details that would point to that.
Looked at, look at those two months compared to the hotel motel tax. See if you've got any spikes in those. Did we have some events going on in those two months?
Of course, August is the race. It's always a healthy month for us. October was a really, really healthy month. I looked at the details to see if perhaps the state had done some delinquent collections, because from time to time, we will get an influx. And I can see that the state has really made an extra effort to go back and collect from some of those taxpayers that maybe didn't file, or they did an audit and were able to glean some additional billings from that. But I could not find anything that just really stood out in the details.
The other concerning thing is that last year's sales tax for December was down also.
Correct.
So we're down, down in December.
Janet, did you dig down to look to see if August and October were months that the state dispersed what they're collecting for online sales tax?
We get those every month.
So you're getting, okay, so that wasn't a catch-up month then?
We get about 400, over $400,000 about every month, where they call it out-of-state sales.
Yeah, okay.
Now, it doesn't break it down.
I just want to make sure it wasn't a catch-up. Okay.
There's no detail behind that number, so.
Well, you had the Apple Festival in our run in October, and the Storytelling Festival.
What storytelling? Let's check the hotel motel and just see if there's any-
We, I can do that. I can check that for those months.
I think the weather was actually decent back then.
Yeah.
Could have been.
Well, we did have that snow in December. You know, I guess I'm still trying to get at what, what accounts for that significant difference, that drop in December compared to what had been the running average.
And the folks tomorrow will tell you, a big, a big snow has a huge impact on their sales volume tomorrow.
And keep in mind, gift card sales-
Don't realize.
Aren't realizing, they're redeemed.
No, that's probably-
We won't have a true feel for what Christmas was worth for another couple of months.
Any other questions? Is that it?
Thank you.
Yeah, that's it. If you have any questions, I'm happy to address them.
Phil?
Read your report. Thank you.
Please, sir. I've asked Phil to give us an update on a couple of projects. I know you all have had questions about the Stream Bank Credits, Lark Street, Knop Creek Road.
He said you'd only need five minutes.
That's exactly how much time my wife's giving me to get out of here. Lark Street, bids have been received at $3.65 million. The city has put into the project with the relocation of the ball field for Boys and Girls Club, acquisition of property, and paying for the extras associated with the project, $1.4 million. We have 12 acres- We have 12 acres roughly to sell, so we would need about $120,000 per acre to break even moving forward. That seems reasonable. The project is scheduled to be completed by May of next year. Okay? The next project would be...
Before we go on, you know what I'm going to ask you about signalization then. What are our plans?
There will have to be some discussion. They did come back to me today and offered $50,000 towards the signal. The signal, we estimate at $400,000 each. And they said one or the other would be okay with them. So is there room in the budget at 350? That's a decision you'll have to make in comparison to everything else. Buffalo Valley. Buffalo Valley, we received a report from the Corps Engineers and TDEC. They tentatively have approved about half of what we submitted, leaving us with about 5,200 feet of stream bank improvements. The credits associated with 5,200 feet would be roughly 3,500 credits. The value of a credit ranges between $3 and $500. So take 400, it's typical. So that gives you a revenue stream. Moving forward, the next step would be to reply to their comments, and then move forward. After that gets resolved, you move forward to the stream bank mitigation document so that you can move into construction. And construction, after construction, then you would get about 20% of the credits each year over a five-year period of time.
That comes out to, at average, $1.4 million if we get 400 per credit?
And what's our investment?
The cost associated with the first would be about $100,000 roughly, somewhere in there for all of the technical assistance. Then I would not recommend bidding the project. I think we can handle stream bank maneuvers so that we can save a little bit of money. So I would estimate an additional $100,000 for plannings and et cetera. And then there would be an annual expense to maintain. I would suggest on this one, I've talked with the consultant, he's putting together a proposal so that you'll be considering it in an upcoming meeting.
So we could net about $1 million after all expenses.
Over how much time?
Five years.
Five years.
Yes. But that's a million a year?
No, five.
Total?
Yeah, it's $1.4 million total for the credits.
And then you've still got 100 acres.
Still own it, it's just restricted.
You still own it, you just restricted that area around the stream.
Kind of like Jacob's Nature Park is restricted.
Yeah, it's typically 50 feet on either side. There might be areas where you go down to 30 feet, but that affects the number of credits. Okay? The final project that Pete wanted to talk about was Nob Creek, and what's the status? Where are we? Where are we headed? How did he do this? Well, basically, we're here. We have six more properties to go.
Your technology help is behind you.
Can you get, there should be a map. And I don't know where it is on this. There it is. There it is. What's in blue has been acquired and agreed to. What is in yellow, we are now doing some reappraisals. These three properties here are owned by one person. He didn't want to negotiate individually, he wanted collectively, so we'll get the appraisals. I expect us to be able to acquire these fairly easily. This track, we will go to court.
Which way?
Bud sales.
Bud sales.
This track, we've already authorized condemnation, but we had to go back and reappraise as one property rather than two. But we've already authorized condemnation there. This is under condemnation already, it's in the courts. And then finally, there is the railroad itself. The bridge design was originally approved, but then they turned around and disapproved it. So we're going to have to go back and redesign the bridge. Here's the bottom line. About $1.1 million or so is 100% federal. That's covering all the design works that were good. Then the balance is STP monies or HPP monies, which are 80/20 split. The 20%, which is the local share, is split between us and the county. So we're 10% and the county's 10%. We've been billing the county. In right-of-way, we told the state here how much we think it would be. We have spent $4 million. We expect to spend with the balance of properties, yet to acquire another million. That puts us at about $5 million. So in total, we're around $6 million to get us through the right-of-way, of which we have paid, will have paid, about $500,000 local monies. County 500, us 500. And that takes us to the construction phase. In the construction, we estimate at $21 million. And we have six, we will have $6 million available as of October of this year of STP monies. There is also a great likelihood we would get local interstate connector monies, which is another $2 million. So that leaves, so we would be at roughly $8 million. That leaves a balance of roughly 12 and 1/2, 13 million. 13. Split the difference in your, our total cost would be in the range between seven, local funds between $7 and $7.5 million if we chose to just move forward with the project and we cover the balance. The trick that we're having to deal, or the issue that we have to deal with, every year we wait on a project, it's going to cost us about 3% in material cost, and 3% of $20 million is $600,000. Of STP monies, the allocation per year is roughly at $1.7 million. So if you waited a couple of years, you might be able to generate another $3 million of STP monies, of which you match 10% and the county 10%. That kind of gives you an idea of where we are financially as you move into the budget cycle, and whether or not we move into construction, hopefully in the fall or the following spring. It's been a long and arduous project, but we should be making some pretty significant grounds. County's all-in. We're really, really happy with that. We got a good working relationship with them. We expect them to continue to be all-in. We actually have another project out in Boon's Creek that we're talking joint effort with the county. And that's associated, and I think I mentioned it, could be upwards of 2,500 jobs. So that's kind of where Nob Creek is, to give you an idea. So we're trying to wrap up the right-of-way phase as quickly as possible. Any questions?
You said the design of the bridge had been rejected. Is that T-Dot you're talking about?
Yes. No, the railroad rejected it.
The railroad?
Railroad did not. Their initial reviewer said fine. We went ahead, and then they went back to just a poured-in-place type of concrete structure rather than the segmental wall structure that we had. So they wanted to go back to that.
So it changed the cost of it?
Slightly, but not much. We will have to put a little bit more money into design, and the designer's getting us a quote now.
Questions?
Anybody want to buy stock in a railroad?
Or asphalt, I think.
Yes. Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. Mr. Peterson, any other areas?
That does were the key issues that I wanted to bring forward tonight to get you all up to speed on. And there are a variety of other public works projects that will have Phil present at one of your March meetings, and I'll have Tom present at your other March meeting. Just an update on some things that we're doing in-house within the operating budget. And then Tom's got some fairly significant debt-funded capital projects in terms of plant expansions and line extensions, those types of things. And I'd be glad to try to answer any more questions that you may have.
We have other projects or follow-up things that anybody has any questions on? No? Okay. Is that it?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, commissioners, any other comments before we adjourn? Snowball games tonight?
Not here, but away.
Not here, away.
Halftime, ETSU and VMI are tied at 39.
Oh, okay.
Little bird told you.
Little bird?
Little bird told you that?
Yeah. A note was handed to him discreetly.
All right, well, nothing else, making adjourn.